Good evening. We will have the pledge, we will have the prayer by Councilman Copeland, and we'll have the pledge by Councilman Williams.
If you all wouldn't mind bowing your head. Precious Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for an opportunity that you've allowed us to see another year, 2022, as a city, as an opportunity to come together to work towards a greater future for our great city. Father, as we come together as a council and as a community to discuss the needs of our community and the growth of our community, I ask that we will be able to do this in love and partnership and communication and strength, that we know that we are going to see a greater tomorrow. We are appreciative of the dollars that we have that have come into our city. Lord, let this be an opportunity for growth, vision, insight, and let us see a rebirth of our great city. So, Lord, we ask this in your son Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I say good evening to the audience. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I'd like to do a friendly reminder for all of the council persons. Please put your phone on vibrate. Once again, all council people, please put your phone on vibrate. Audience, I have to ask you as well to put yours on vibrate, because I need a new phone, and if your phone go off, it's mine. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Protem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that next Monday, January 17th, the city hallway is closed to observe Martin Luther. And Mayor, our order of business takes us to public hearings.
The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole, for council to hear the information provided by the speaker for considerations regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers are limited to remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, your position, should or just should you support or oppose it. The first speaker will be considered the main speaker. Present, 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 presenters, I'm sorry. Or designated representatives are allowed 10 minutes to speak. Otherwise, speakers may be limited to three minutes. Public hearings are not a question and answer session. Therefore, questions must not be directed to individual council persons, city staff, or to the audience. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first public hearing tonight is the official intent to reverse project expenditure with bond proceeds and authorizing publication of a notice of intent to issue bonds.
I see we have Mr. Paul at the podium.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to tell you it's not a good view for you again.
Hold on one minute, let's get the buzzer right.
Okay.
You ready, Miss Anne?
I don't want to be in trouble. All right, Mayor Moore, Mayor Protem Balls, council, staff, and members present from the community. This public hearing tonight is to talk about my Clean Waters Disadvantaged Community Lead Service Line Principal Forgiveness Loan. The project plan adoption and submittal was approved by resolution to the council on June 7th of 2021. So, this is related to that. The project plan was submitted by the deadline. The city applied for a $5 million loan. After consideration by the state, they approved an allocation in its intended use plan to the city of Saginaw's project in the amount of $4.5 million, using the State of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Funds. This hearing is part of the process for issuance of bonds for the project. Although similar in effect to a grant, the loan with principal forgiveness is still technically a loan, and the process needs to move forward accordingly. Also note, Council Communication Number Two is related since these are professional services required to assist in connection with the issuance of the bonds. So, I will state also, I didn't state at the beginning, my name is Paul Reinch, most of you know that. I'm the Director of Water and Wastewater Treatment Services, and I am recommending approval of this process.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments? Do we have any more comments? Going for the last time, any more comments? I need a motion to close this hearing. It's been moved as second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Our second hearing tonight is regarding the proposed draft of the City of Saginaw Five-Year Parks and Recreation Plan.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Cindy Todd with Spicer Group, and I am just in front of you today to talk about the draft recreation plan that has been on public review for the last 30 days. And I just want to tell you a little bit about the plan. The idea behind this plan is that it is a community park recreation open space greenway plan, and it's a five-year recreation plan. And the idea is that it makes the city eligible for land and water conservation fund, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, and greenway grants. The intent of the community park and recreation plan is to create an inventory of the existing facilities and resources, identify community recreation and open space needs, and set a plan of action for the next five years. The DNR provides financial assistance to communities through its grant program. A current DNR-approved community park plan is required to be eligible for the land and water and the trust fund grant. Within, just a quick overview of what's in the document itself. It talks about the community description. Ideally, the idea is it's a roadmap for the decisions made for the next five years for our parks and recreation and open space lands. It has community descriptions, administrative structure, recreation inventory of all recreation that are within the city, description of the planning process, it talks about the public input. We did a public survey that was out there, and we also had stakeholder meetings. Our public survey, we had 540 responses. And for parks and recreation, the real focus was on trails and trail connections, both for land and for water, connecting to the river, connecting with the Iron Bell Trail, and then pathways for all ages of mobility throughout the city. That was the biggest, kind of the biggest thing that really came out of a lot of our surveys. So, within that document, we talked about goals and objectives and action plans, and those goals and objectives focus on, they're very broad, so that as you go after different grants, if you have specialized things you want to go after, it covers a lot of areas. And our goals and objectives are focused on our trails and our connectivities and our parks and our accessibility. The next steps are, this needs to be, our goal was to conduct in 2021, we gathered public input, we conducted the inventory, and we developed the draft plan that you have before you. It was out for 30-day review, starting on December 10th. It was advertised today as our public hearing. And then, the plan would then need to be adopted by the city council. And then, the plan needs to be submitted to DNR by February 1st, 2022, along with the meeting minutes notes and the advertisements that we had headed out to bid, in order to make the plan eligible then for the next five years. This plan then would be eligible until it would expire in 2026. That's my brief overview of the plan. If you have any questions, or I guess it's a public hearing, so we're just kind of a brief description of what we have in front of you.
Is there anyone that would like to make a comment on the five-year parks and recreation plan? Going once, is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Going for the final time, anyone who would like to make a comment? I need a motion to close this hearing.
Second.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at public input.
We are now at the public input part of our meeting. We'd like to welcome all of you who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slow and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes, in which will be timed by the clerk. So, please cover your main points. Once again, remember, we are to be courteous and considerate and respectful to the members of the public and to the speaker who's speaking, and to those watching on SGTV and in the council chambers. We like to, we want to do this so that the council can have, can give a serious consideration to the concerns that you have. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Angie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Angie Miller, and I'm the President of the Mid-Michigan Area Labor Council. The Labor Council, along with Representative Amos O'Neal and other organizations, including the Saginaw branch of the NAACP, is currently working on protecting voting rights. Currently, there are individuals working for Secure Michigan Vote out in our community. You can see them at the grocery store, the barber, or numerous other locations, and they are encouraging people to sign a petition and telling them it will protect their voting rights and make our elections more secure. The petition does not protect voting rights. Here are the facts. The 2020 election was not stolen. And anyone who says otherwise is creating drama and spreading untruth. In Michigan, county, city, and township clerks conducted over 250 professional audits across the state. And every one of those nonpartisan audits, as well as the court cases across the state and the nation, have affirmed the accuracy and integrity of the 2020 election. Ballots were not mailed out en masse to Michigan voters. Applications were mailed out, which needed to be returned before the absentee ballot could be mailed. To be successful, Secure Michigan Vote must collect the signatures of approximately 8% of the people who voted in the last Michigan gubernatorial election. Once collected, the measure does not go on the ballot, but goes to the Republican-led legislature, who can approve the language or create and adopt their own version. Their decision is final. The governor does not have power to veto, and the voices of this community will not be heard. So, here's what I ask. For those of you here this evening and those of you at home, it's simple. To protect voting rights and those eligible voters in our community, decline to sign the petition. For those of you sitting here at city council or in front of me from city council, I would request that you put forth a resolution opposing the Secure Michigan petition and any other efforts aimed at restricting voter access and voter rights. Spread the word. Talk to your coworkers, neighbors, friends, and family. Post it on social media. Together, we can protect voting rights, which in turn protects democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Indigo Dudley.
There we go, I always have to do that. Good evening. Hi, my name is Indigo Dudley, and for those of you who don't know me, I am born and raised in Saginaw, Michigan. My parents are well-known in this community. I hold a couple of titles, one of them being Ms. Saginaw County. I'm the current title holder. I am a recent alumni from Saginaw Valley State University, and I am a First Ward Leadership Fellows, and I am also a commissioner on the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission. All of these things are wonderful, but I am here to talk to you about the First Ward Leadership Fellows as far as how it has affected me and how it can impact people or younger individuals like myself in positions of leadership. We always talk about building up our younger generation and investing in our younger people. And I was fortunate to be a part of the First Ward Leadership Fellows, and they put their money where their mouth was. I was introduced to many individuals who guided me and leaded me and led me and coached me into being able to sit in positions of power. One of my mentors, Dr. Dawn Hinton, she said, "We don't want to give our young people an opportunity to serve. We want to give them positions to lead." I think that in our community, we have a lot of opportunities for our younger individuals to serve, and while that is good, we need to put them in positions to lead. So, why am I talking to you guys about this today? We all know that there is a lot of dollars going into Saginaw, into our city of Saginaw, and I would like to challenge you all to consider putting your money where your mouth is. I understand that this is a difficult decision for you guys, and I do not wish to be in your seat now. But I would challenge you to, when it comes to the time to allocate these dollars, I would like you to think of First Ward and the First Ward Leadership Fellows. I would not be in the position I am today if it weren't for this program, and I believe that it could make a true impact on young individuals and put them in positions where they can lead and continue growing our lovely community. That is all that I have for you. I hope that I made you smile today, and I hope you guys have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Addison.
Good afternoon, my name is Jesse Addison. I'm the head trainer of Ultimate Boxing Gym here in Saginaw. This is my son Lorenzo Reynolds, one of my outstanding fighters who fought through the amateur program and also went on to become a professional fighter. We are here today to address some ideals about beautifying Saginaw. It was brought to our attention by Patricia Bullware, about, she's with the Project Unity. And her ideal was to put some of the athletes that have been here in Saginaw, not only boxing, but basketball, football, what have you. But we just would like to honor some of them with some paintings on the buildings downtown. And then, you know, it also gives the younger kids something to look up to, something that they can also look forward to, you know, as they travel through their journey of life. We also would like to just give thanks to the city. You know, they have always been good to us, and I think it's a wonderful program that you want to do here.
Excuse me, Jesse, you're the only one that signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that'll be, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Patrice Bullware.
Good evening. I'm Patrice Bullware, founder of Project Unified, and it's good to be in front of you all again. Good to see you all. I am just, as Brother Jesse said, you know, we want to just encourage and to empower and to lift up, allow the youth to know that there is hope. So, we speak about the urban and the inner cities, and sometimes it's deemed as the dead zones, but I beg to differ. There's much life in the hood, there's much life on those areas, and we need to embrace that. And so, as before, I was speaking about paying homage to those who have paved the way. African-Americans, Hispanics that have lived in the areas where we live and have been great public service individuals. Our first black mayor, our first black police officer, firefighter. Then we have athletes and everything else that come along with it, even in the medical fields. We just want to just post some mirrors up. And we do not want anything like a comic. We want actual figures, so that our babies can feel like their dreams too can become reality. And so, also, I wanted to speak about just coming together. I don't know if you all could elaborate more on the ARPA funding, if there's some applications and when, some actual applications. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you all have done in the past and now doing. I met with Dawn, and I met with people who have done a lot. And she's very quiet about what she does, Dawn of a New Day. She's very quiet about what she's done, and I like that humility. But she needs to be acknowledged as well. And so, Jamie Forbes have met, and we have, you know, we want to partner, we want to do more than just collaborate. We want to make things happen, and we want to do it together. So, together, we can make a difference, and I just thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Dawn Hinton.
Good evening. Again, my name is Dawn Hinton. I am a 25-year resident of Saginaw, of the city of Saginaw, and I'm here to speak on behalf of First Ward Community Center's receipt of ARPA funding. What we all know is that First Ward Community Center has been a significant stakeholder in our community for over 90 years. The center is an important resource. It continues to valiantly serve our community with programming for youth and seniors. First Ward provides food for those folks who are food insecure, literacy for the youth of Saginaw, and employment for area teens. As a faculty member at SVSU, I have partnered with First Ward on a number of opportunities over the past 10 years. So, I've engaged young people of First Ward through the Department of Natural Resources grant specifically, had them come on campus talking about developing critical thinking skills, right? How do we improve the city of Saginaw was our first topic. We went to the library, we studied other cities that benchmarked, that we were able to use as benchmarks for what could potentially happen in Saginaw. We brought them on campus, we talked about the pros and cons of solar energy. What are the implications for Saginaw's urban area when it comes to solar energy? And I'm currently working with nine First Ward youth in order to prepare them to travel to Saginaw's newly-mentored sister city in a monochrome Ghana. Now, these students have been studying Ghanaian culture. They have been interacting with Ghanaian residents. They've been having virtual conversations with these folks. We've been learning the language. Although our trip was postponed due to COVID, we are currently exploring the opportunity to travel again this summer. So, the work done in this institution, as we've heard from our Ms. Saginaw County, Indigo Dudley, has been and continues to be critical to the success of individuals across the city of Saginaw. And I'd like to ask the city council to keep this in mind as you prepare to distribute the funds to support organizations across our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Beatty.
Good evening. I'm Audrey Beatty, a longtime resident, recently returned in the last six years. I'm a native of Saginaw, and I guess if you've been around more than 20 or 30 years, you might know me. Other than that, you might not. But I'd just like to extend to you happy holidays for this incoming year and a wonderful, speedy, effective, productive year for the city. My reason for coming today, I modified my objective today, but I was so encouraged and delighted to hear the young lady talk about the leadership project at First Ward. I think that's what she said. But one of the projects that I was bringing to the table this evening was a vehicle that would be a collaboration of the city, the county, the school board, and the residents to provide an institution for training and learning that might meet, let's say, on Saturdays once a month or something. I don't know what there is already, I'm not privy to that. But I would like to see something where these children, the ones under school age, would be able to learn and train, because not all of the kids get government and civics and so forth in school, and everybody's, well, STEM is the foremost project, I guess. But I'm suggesting that these children become part of a program where they would be nurtured. They would be nurtured and trained to take service positions, administrative capacities in this community, where when you get ready to hire a superintendent or this or that or that, you don't have to go across the nation to recruit people. I'd like to see that, and that has not been enough of that. And I think with the crop of the young people that are coming up today, there is a very, an extensive potential for that type of student in this day and time, because so much is going on. And I was so encouraged to hear Dr. Potier about his life when they said that he, when he said, he was asked why certain things, and he said, and his father asked him, he said, he asked him a question, and he remarked to his father, he said, "You look at yourself as a black man." He said, "I look at myself as a man." And that was so impressive to me, and I think we should do more of that. I don't know what kind of teachers we got coming in and going out, but I just thought that would be something very significant. If we could get, and this has nothing to do with ARPA necessarily, but it is something to do with the growth and development of the potential of this community.
Can I, I motion to extend our time for 45 seconds.
Thank you. Okay. It's been moved as second, any comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. One minute, Ms. Audrey.
Another idea that I had.
She got to put you on the clock, please. No, I asked her to wait one minute.
Okay, are you ready to continue?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The other idea that I will discuss at this moment is that of, it's organizing some type of vehicle where these kids could come together across boundaries, across neighborhoods. They're not, they don't merge together in their schools. So, how can they grow up and become civilized friends or whatever, unless they meet up at colleges, which is not likely, not around here, not yet? But I think there should be a vehicle that would promote and develop innovative programs within the schools, where these kids can come together on a weekend basis. I remember when I was finishing up my masters in Kalamazoo, I had an opportunity to create a separate program.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor Moore, city council members. Happy New Year to you all, New Year, new beginning. New Year's Eve, a young lady worked at Dollar, I think Family Dollar, got shot, robbed and shot, coming off of work. Me and my pastor, members of the church, we've been praying for this young lady, and I'd just like to reiterate the need of Hill's Second Chance Program. Earlier today, I ran into a little young guy. He walked in the store, pants hanging off of him. I said, "Little bro, pull your pants up." He pulled his pants up, and I noticed he got a pistol on him. I asked him, "Who you beefing with?" He said, "Nobody." I said, "Nobody? Well, why you got a gun?" He said, "I'd rather be caught with it than without it." I said, "Okay, you smarter than that. Being that you ain't, being smart won't break it down to you." Being that you ain't, being smart won't break it down to you on a layman's terms. If you go to prison with that gun, that's a mandatory five years. If you got felony convictions, you might do 20. The point that I'm making, if you go to prison, you ain't gonna have no gun. Nine times out of 10, you feel that gun make you powerful, make you a man. If you can fight, you wouldn't even have a pistol. When you go to prison, you ain't gonna have no gun. You gonna have to fight, but you gonna go to prison, you gonna be subjected to all kinds of things and you might become a victim. But the point that I'm making is if we don't get some type of program, this is gonna continue to happen. Behavior gonna continue to happen. It's unfortunate. And I try to do my best every time I see, I didn't even know this kid today, and he could have been no more than 17 years old. We need to do better and I know we can do better. Together we stand, divided we fall. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is April Williams.
Good afternoon, city council, mayor, audience. I am here today to speak about small businesses. Small businesses provide character and individuality, sorry I have a hard time saying that word, to a community. It is as neighbors helping neighbors, friends helping friends. However, small businesses are more than that. I consider what mine to be more than that. I consider my small business to be a helping hand. I believe that with that right foundation and support team, everyone has the ability and power to be great. There is something powerful about being able to help someone who cannot do nothing for themselves. And you don't look for anything in return. A lot of times, you know, we do stuff and we look for things from return. I have rental property that I opened up to the community during the COVID time. People for resources, for faxing, for printing, to feed, to give away coats, anything that I could do for my community. We did a barbecue, gave away a couple bikes, and I would like to continue doing this with my business. My business is located here in Saginaw, Michigan. It is located at 208 Florence Street. And I want to do that. I love doing that. You know how you say you don't know what your niche is in the world? Okay? You don't know what your purpose. I feel like I done tried a lot, but I feel like giving is everything to me. Helping is everything. And I don't look for my blessings from people. I look for my blessings from the Lord. And trust me, they come. And I would like, with the help of the council, to open that to a wider, to a wider area like my hall. I want to make that something great. I want to make that something where if someone needs help, they can come there and they know they can get it, whatever it might be. If I can't do it for them, I want to make a call and I want to be able to help that person in the need of time. So I am asking you guys to help me to help others and to make that dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Council members, remember you have three minutes to speak. Please say your points as well and speak clearly so that the audience can understand you. Tonight, we'll begin with Councilwoman Flores.
Well, thank you so much. Happy New Year to everybody. State Rep. O'Neil, thank you so much for being here tonight. Also, former council member John, thank you. Just real quick, I want to thank the county commissioner Carl Ruth for, you know, kind of leading the way and stating that he had spent a great amount of time in public service. Now he's stepping down. I think his quote was, "When it's time to step down and give new people a chance to introduce themselves, it's a good time." So good on him. Also, happy anniversary to Swag Magazine. They're celebrating their first anniversary. I just put in a, either a proclamation or a point of recognition to make sure that they are honored this year in the city. I think it's great what Julian Moore is doing. I do want to comment on the shooting that had happened over at the, I think it's Family Dollar, at the 3,000 block of East Tennessee. If you have any information on that for Ms. Flynn's shooting, please contact 1-800-422-5245. Additionally, I want to commemorate, we had the first homicide of the year. It's Tony Jackson, who's 20 months old. It's very sad that that is our first homicide and we should all kind of take a minute to honor his life. Additionally, if you have any references to the ARPA committee that's coming up, please get ahold of the city manager. Hopefully, they have some training going on. I know that Congressman Killey had said that there's some training from the U.S. Treasury Department that's going to be happening on the 12th. So hopefully, people can get tuned to that. If you don't have that avenue to have the Zoom upsite, please get ahold of me. It's 989-992-3803 for my phone number, but otherwise, that's it.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Copeland.
Happy New Year, everyone. I don't have much for you this evening. I do want to share in commemoration of Dr. King's birthday. This Monday at 10:00 a.m., there will be a march for partnership with Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated and Delta College, starting at the corner of Florence Street and Hayden Street. There will be a march at 10:00 a.m. And then at 11:00 a.m., there will be the MLK, Dr. Martin Luther King luncheon that will be held at the Dow Event Center. But I do encourage you though, if you do have the day off and you want to spend some time and you don't have anything planned, to come down to Florence Street in March in commemoration of Dr. King's birth. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate every speaker that was up to speak this evening and am taking notes into consideration. And hopefully, I personally will be able to speak to some of you all. I would also like to say Happy New Years to everyone. And I'd also like to brag a little bit and say congratulations to Janaye Lamar. She was inducted, I like to say. She passed the bar for the state of California. She is my niece and she is an attorney here in Michigan. And let's cross our fingers that she'll just fly back and forth to California and that she'll stay in Saginaw. So kudos to her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have much this evening. Ms. Miller, if there is a way for you to email that information that so it can be shared via social media, that would be great to help make everyone aware. And that's all that, Happy New Year. That's all that I have.
Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you. I too will be briefed tonight, but I do thank all of our public speakers for being here tonight. I too wanted to say to Ms. Miller, if you can help me or work with me to get the language together for a resolution and we can talk to our staff about getting that going, I personally would support that 100%. But other than that, Happy New Year. It is good to be back here and that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say Happy New Year to everyone and thank you to our public speakers for being here. First and foremost, I definitely want to say thank you to Angie for bringing that information forward. I too would like that, so if you can forward it on to me, because a lot of people in a lot of ways and a lot of avenues have fought hard for voting rights, so it is very important. I look forward to the C D B G meetings, interviews coming up. We do have money that we are giving out for our home program and emergency solutions program, so I encourage all fellow council members to attend these meetings. It definitely gives you an insight on what is being asked, the requests, but also maybe open your eyes to some additional organizations in the community that don't always get the main player spotlight. So please come out. I want to remind everyone, as it's freezing cold outside, bring your pets inside, but also keep in mind of your firefighters. If there's a fire, clear path to the fire hydrants, they need to get to them to access the water, so please keep that in mind when the snow falls and you are shoveling. And then lastly, I just want to remind everyone, we talk about training, we talk about future of our people. You can be, it doesn't matter how old you are, there are tons of training dollars available at our local community colleges and universities. So I encourage you, whether it's skilled trades, one-year certificates, short-term trainings, or if you want to go and get associate's degree or beyond, reach out to your university and your higher education providers because there are training dollars available and pretty much you can go to school for free right now if you don't have the means to pay for it. So I just want to encourage that. I work in higher ed, a few other, well, another individual in this council does work in higher ed too. If you don't know how to get connected, reach out to one of us. We will definitely put that information in your hands or share it with somebody that you know would be interested. And Happy New Year to everyone. I'm looking forward to a very prosperous and smooth, forward, positive movement here in Saginaw, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Oster.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll take my mask off because otherwise my glasses fog up. Angie Miller, again, thank you for coming here tonight and sharing that information because I don't think a lot of people understand what is actually happening out there with that petition and how they're trying to circumvent the process, even though it is lawful and they can do that. They did it in 2018 with the Family Medical Leave Act when that was there, was going to be voted on, be put on the ballot. I want to thank all of our speakers again for coming tonight, taking the time to come out on a very cold evening. We do hear you and you're, like I said, the city manager will follow back with a response to your input. Again, I kind of missed Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to the first meeting for city council for the year of 2022. A couple other things too is you were just mentioning about higher education. There is money out there too in Delta College through the college scholarships. They're still taking applications until February 2nd. Last year, they did award 621 students with almost $700,000 in scholarships. And also right here in the city of Saginaw, the Community Foundation is also has a scholarship program, and that phone number is 989-755-0545. And they too are taking applications up until February 15th for their application program. And I think last year, they awarded around 235 students with scholarships. What Councilwoman Scherzer was talking about too, there are, the program out here is MI Reconnect, and that is through the state of Michigan for trade school or a two-year degree in free education. So in applications, you can actually take and fill it out right on your phone. And I've known, I've said it before, I've known of people that have it in there, have gotten money for school. If you want to do something fun, there's an event coming up on January 15th. There's some sponsors here, there's a bunch of sponsors here through Dow, Kiss 107.1, Jolt, W I O G, The Joe, City of Saginaw, 96.1 FM, but they're going to be doing some events down at Hoy Park. And on January 15th, they're going to have a skate night, so that's going to be from 4:00 until 7:00 p.m. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Balls.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out and expressing your needs and the things that you want for the city of Saginaw. Special thank you to Angie Miller, the labor rep, for bringing the labor update, you know, and tying in labor hand with the Martin Luther King holiday that's coming up. You know, Martin Luther King, everywhere he went, he always spoke about labor and how people need to be treated equal. A lot of times when he spoke, he was talking to labor people, talking about getting higher wages. And that's where he got the pullback bad because a lot of people did not want people to have middle-class wages. As a matter of fact, when he got killed in Birmingham, he was at a labor rally then. You know, so we remember that. The first time he went to jail, the labor, the ones that got him out of jail, you know, because they knew that his fight was our fight. And whenever we had people fighting for people's wages, we always had people to take them out unfortunately. But you know, that's one thing we got to remember that labor is the only thing that equalized everybody. Normally, when you go to a job, everybody that works that particular job, they normally get the same wages. But now it's getting to the point now where they even started, got two people working on the same job and one person got to work there for two or three years before they get the full wages, and that's not fair. You know, so we got to be cognizant of what labor has done for America and for, especially for African Americans, even in South Africa. You know, before the people had their rights in their communities, they started asking for their rights on their jobs and that spilled off into their communities. You know, Nelson Mandela spent years in jail because he's fighting for labor people at the same time, 28 years he put in jail for fighting for labor. And Martin Luther King gave his life here in America. You know, so we need to remember what labor has done for all Americans, especially us African Americans, coming from the cotton fields to the steel mills up here in the north. So let's not forget that. Everybody that brought issues here, especially about the community centers and stuff, that we need to work with our community centers because when I grew up in the community center, we had baseball teams, track teams. They learned us how to cook, how to sing. They learned us about different ethnic groups and all that thing like that. And it seemed to me like soon as community senators went down, crime went up. Now the kids don't have nobody to mentor them. If you went to a community center, anybody here that went to a community center, me and Brenda, I know we spent time at the Holden Jones and the Civitan, we always had mentors there, people who we didn't like until we got to be older and we kind of realized the things that they were telling us about life and life lessons, it really sunk in there. And I still think about people like Mr. Jesse and Reuben Daniels and other people, Ernie Thompson, mentors in mine at First Ward Community Center. And some days of the day, I tell my grandkids stuff and it came right for those people. So we need to make sure we work in the community centers. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, again. It's a great year. Happy New Years to all of you. My theme for this year is it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. The city of Saginaw is going to rebirth with the help of the citizens and the ARPA dollars once we get to figure out how we can spend now. We do plan to make Saginaw look different. And what I mean by different is improved. It's still going to be Saginaw, but we're just going to be improved. Over the holidays, a lot has happened. People have lost their loved ones and in the last probably 48, 24, 48 hours, as we sit here and we're thankful for being warm, somebody's heat got cut off. Somebody's water got cut off. I need for you two community, everybody that's listening, I would love for you to check on the elders because there are elderly people who are out here who don't have anybody. So if you've got an elderly person in your neighborhood, not just in my neighborhood because it happened to me because I'm a senior, during the holidays when it snowed, a young man just shoveled my snow and I asked him, how much did he want? And he said, "No, for all you do." This one on me. So sometimes just being nice, it's good to be nice. My public speakers, Angie, you know, when it comes to voting, all of us need to be on our Ps and Qs. For Ms. Williams and Mr. Hill and for Ms. Bullware and the boxing people, you know what? Beautification is something that our city needs and we're going to get it. Everything we got coming is coming our way. We just got to hold on. We keep talking about it. If you keep talking about it long enough, I was told you're speaking into existence. So if we keep talking, same thing with you, Mr. Hill, don't give up that fight. Keep talking. If you keep talking, somebody going to hear you. With that, thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the reports from the manager.
Thank you. And first, I wanted to give an update to council about the, some of our departments and divisions. So we did have questions from the media this week. There are other local units in Michigan that have had to reduce their services or close some offices due to limited staffing with COVID-related issues. We have not had to do that here in Saginaw. And at this point, I don't think that we will. But I do want to thank all of our staff and division heads and department heads for working through this, in fact, for the past two years. I'll tell you, last week, we had one division that had all but two people out. And that was Treasury, and they did continue to work through the week. Our treasurer was working the window with the one staff member left there, so. And that's, I think, has happened in a number of our departments. So I wanted to thank F for all of that work that they've done. And also mention, we've had, we had a few people come up and talk about this, and Ms. Bullware has been working on that part for a long time. And it made me think of all of our other organizations and committees and either formal city committees and commissions or organizations like Unity Park, the Tea House, the Friends of Hoy Park, and so on, too many to name. But they've all been working for the last two years as well to make sure there are activities for people in the city to do, even whether they're more limited or not. We saw Pride, I think, in 2020 do a limited Friday Night Live because they could not have events. And they worked hard to make sure that there was, were things to do. So I wanted to thank them, too, in the last year, and hopefully, it becomes easier this year. Also, congratulations to Jordan Beatty. He is the Officer of the Month for the Police Department this month. The issue of educational opportunities for youth in Saginaw, I do want to remind people and bring it back up again that the Saginaw Fire Department helped to start a program at the Saginaw Career Complex where the youth in the city can get some fire training and hopefully, that makes them interested in working in the Saginaw Fire Department. Please, I know, continue to spread that word. I think with the last school year, there was limited participation. But we really want to get more city youth interested in that class and moving through there so that in the future, we can have our residents working in the fire department. Same with the Police Department. We do send people to the Police Academy. I think we have three that started today. And we'd like, like for those individuals to be youth from the city. And finally, we are currently working on the FY 2023 budget. Sounds funny to say that, but that's what we're working on. And I recently met with Paul Ryan, who spoke earlier, the Director of Water and Waste Treatment, his deputy. I think part of our process this year in the budget, I want to have Paul present to council some of the things that you all did see at the tour of the plant, if those of you who were able to attend, so that the public gets to learn the type of investment that I think we need in that water and wastewater system so that in the future, when we start having these projects come out, there's more information out there about the need for that. And that concludes the management update. Madam Mayor?
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I want to make a comment. The city manager mentioned about the Fire Department. And I talked to some of the guys at the Fire Department, and they said that their program is for any high school student. And if they enroll their senior year, if they go through the whole program that year, they can be a firefighter when they get through the program. You know, so we need to let our citizens know that. I mean, because that's a real good opportunity for a kid to go to high school and train and be a firefighter as soon as he graduates high school. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, and that, that program, I think, is a great opportunity. And you know, there aren't that many people who are certified firefighters. And I will, it goes back, it started when Chief Fanley was here, Chief Rains continued it. But it was a lot of development from our own firefighter staff. The Training Officer, Hausbeck, is very involved in that. So really, congratulations to those firefighters and Fire Command for setting it up. And also for the school system was willing to work with our fire department and put it in place. And I think we did start talking about that on the City-City County School Liaison Committee a few years ago, and the fire department presented to that. So that's just an example of that committee working together as well.
Yes, sir.
One, I want to say thank you for sending us the final rules that came in. It was a nice, I guess, gift for the new year, for, I'm sure, for your staff. But with those being received, and I've been sending everyone to your office regarding the proposals, is there possibly a reference sheet or a guideline that some, I've been getting asked questions, and I don't, I can only say so much, but is there possibly a form that I could share with those in the community?
So we don't have a form right now. I don't know if there's any materials provided by Treasury. But we're, we've been talking to a firm that is working with a lot of local units in Michigan. We asked them to provide a proposal for us that we can bring back to council. And I'd like to have them present to you because some of these things, you know, with the staffing level that we have, we're not going to be able to provide all the internal controls, dispersments, the rules, and the review. So I think that would be something that's helpful. And with a group that's working with a lot of other local units, and they don't have to reinvent the wheel every time, so there's some uniformity there. But I expect we'll have something from them in the next week to two weeks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a few. Happy New Year. With the final rules that came out, how long would the staff need to look over those documents? I know it's about 472 pages total, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, they probably started reviewing it once they came out. You're obviously not going to know every rule in there, so there will be some specifics. And I think that's, it kind of illustrates why we need that assistance. I mentioned from Councilman Copeland's question because our staff that are working on this, this is all brand-new work with this allocation. So I think, I think we'll need that assistance.
In terms of a timeline, how long do you think that that would be before we would have some, either a one-pager like Councilman Copeland stated, or?
I would guess probably, depending on if we engage this firm, they may already even have that. So in fairly short order, I would, I would guess you'd have something where they can advise us on some protocol for receiving those. And also, we do have a, we have all of the proposals we received filed. We have a summary of those. So I would imagine that a firm would probably contact those people who have applied and give them those guidelines in case there's additional information that they need or direction as well. That'd be the kind of assistance that would be beneficial for us and the applicants.
Have there been any staff members that had enrolled in the, I know that Congressman Kilde's deputy chief of staff had said that there are seminars on the 7th, the 10th, and the 12th. Are there anybody that's been enrolled in those seminars for the US Treasury Department?
I don't know if they've enrolled yet, but I assume that they will. Both our finance director Lori Brown and Ms. Jones, the Director of OMB, have attended multiple training sessions from GFOA, Michigan Treasury, the White House. So I'm going to be comfortable in saying that they will avail themselves of that training that's available.
If they haven't, on the 7th, they would tomorrow, or on the 12th? And then, I think what's important, when I look through those final rules, is that they had types of questions, right? Where it was proposed, you know, this is what we're hearing from our community, and then this is what the Treasury is going to go with. And in the beginning of the final rules, it said that they're not going to deviate too much from the interim final rules. But if there is a particular question, that they would kind of guide that between the four buckets that were talked about. So I think that's important for folks that are in staff, but also that are going to be on this committee, that are, they should be kind of astute to those things.
Yeah, and we'll have, for staff, we do have, and the committee as well, we have additional resources. I did talk with public sector consultants. They sent me a proposal Friday, I believe, to be the facilitator for our ARPA Committee, similar to what they did for you. And I was also contacted by Dr. Scorsoni, who's interested in assisting with that process as well. So I will be contacting him this week.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't go with Plant Miranda to be the consulting firm after the final rules, between that and the interim final rules?
They are partnered with this firm.
So they're, okay.
They would submit a joint, yep. They're planning to submit a joint proposal. They've been working with this, this firm throughout the state as well.
Okay. Have there been any departments that have requested ARPA funds that are under the city's umbrella?
Yes, sir. We have, we have a long list of city projects that we will also bring back to council. Ms. Jones has been putting that together. And we want to put that in a format for you. Once we move a little bit longer in the process, I will get with her and review them to see what we think is eligible and what we can include on this list. And everything from parks projects, cemetery projects, to I believe that the clerk does even have some election projects on that list. So it's, it's pretty wide range.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at C-Hall and also on city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion to approve, consider agenda leaving room for exception.
So moved.
It's been moved as second. Do we have any exceptions? All those in favor? Sign, no, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions? Have any no questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at Boards Commissioning Committee Reports.
Do we have any council person who would like to report on any board or commission? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next order of business is ordinance consideration and adoption. We do have one this evening.
We need a motion to adopt.
It's moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
We are at resolutions, and we do have one this evening. Is declaring official intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds and authorizing publication of bonds.
I need, I need a motion to adopt. Adopt.
Hold on a second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
We are at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah.